I'll the committee, the whole meeting to order. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Schwartz, trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt, trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Hebda.
Here.
We have quorum.
Okay. All right. What's the first item here?
The first item is the presentation of the proposed FY 15-16 capital improvements plan. Larry, Andor, and Nikki are going to do some introductory comments with regards to this, and then they're going to give it to Dave, and Dave's going to walk you through the plan for both this coming proposed budget year, and also then talk a little bit about the proposed five-year capital plan.
Okay. Good evening. I just have a few notes before we begin the presentation of the capital, the proposed capital budget for 2015-2016. The first and foremost, the good news is that everything that's included in the capital year, or capital budget for this year, is supported with existing revenues. So as it stands today, this is fully funded capital plan. The one exception is the Greg's Landing intersection. That has been left out of the financial budget at this point in time, anticipating that a decision regarding that intersection will be made at a later date. At that point, if the project does move forward, it will be bonded, so that would be funded through bond revenues. Secondly, the original home rule sales tax plan provided for $6 million in debt financing of discretionary projects. As you can tell from the five-year plan, there's more than $6 million in projects in the out years to choose from. So at this point, there will be a process later this year to allow the board to review all of the discretionary projects that are in the plan and prioritize those in the out years. And the timing of when those start will depend on multiple factors, depending on how much the time the board wants to take to review those projects, also staggering the projects to match our debt financing plan and make sure that we're issuing bank-qualified bonds to finance all of that, and also to ensure proper availability of manpower at Public Works. We don't want to over-sign ourselves up for projects. Lastly, there are a few additional items in the capital budget, smaller items that won't be discussed here this evening, that we will touch upon when we go through the departmental budgets during the month of March. At this point, if there aren't any questions, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Don't make that assumption. Now, right from Jump Street, what would be bonded out besides the traffic signal? We're not just binding out 450 grand.
It depends on what discretionary projects the board would be interested in. Some of the items that we threw out during the home rule sales tax discussion was artificial turf at some of the fields at V-HAC, a maintenance building, and also refinancing TIF bonds and any other future issues that we look at to refinance.
Okay, so it would be more than 450,000 out.
Correct. You got it.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm not going, we're not going to float a bond for 450 grand.
Absolutely not. No.
Okay.
Let me take that out of your left pocket.
Okay.
Actually, the chief is offering for more things to float a bond.
Oh, I'm sure he does.
If you're looking for additional projects.
You can come up with a couple, I'm sure.
All right. Okay, Dave, you get this?
Yes, thank you very much. As Mr. Kalmar shared, we'll go over the annual program, so next year's CIP program, and then we do have the five-year plan in your packet, and we've also made hard copies. So we'll go through the first year, and if at the end you want to move anything from the five-year plan onto the annual plan, you know, please advise staff. I'll go through it rather fast. Make sure to interrupt me if you have questions. If not, I'll continue through. The road rehab program, we have presented that to the board previously. There is an attachment showing which areas that we're doing, and that's a $1.3 million project. Let's see, the streetscape improvements, Deer Path, that is part of our road rehab program. What we'd like to do at the end of Deer Path and 60 is we'd like to add some landscaping at that very visible point. So we would, as part of the project, we would extend irrigation line, and then we would add some landscaping. So it would be right at the very nose of Deer Path, and when you're traveling up and down Route 60, you can look over and you can see the landscaping. Right now, we add landscaping at, by Autumn Leaves, the atrium entrance. We're looking to remove that and really put our landscape enhancements at the end of Deer Path where more people can enjoy it, rather than just an offshoot. So there won't be any additive staff time. We would devote it to this larger project.
Now, this is just about Route 60 in general, the whole, you know, median landscaping and everything. Is there any electricity out there? Any of those medians to those trees to where we could light it up like Christmas?
I think we looked at it in the past, prior to, you know, the last five years. I think there was a proposal to do that and add electricity, but I don't think we have electricity out there now. We do have irrigation, but not electrical.
Well, the question is, I mean, I'll ask the board, I mean, at some point, would that be kind of?
What would it cost us to do it? I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know what it would cost, but, I mean, we are kind of a shopping mecca, and, you know, just putting lights out there would be...
So what we can do, let me dust off what that estimate was. Let me refresh that, and I'll bring that back, and we can have more discussions as part of the five-year program.
Because there's a limited opportunity on Milwaukee, right? I mean...
You could do a little bit on Milwaukee, up past the mall, maybe in south of...
Well, I mean, in the center, you know, the median. Is it just south of 60?
There is some...
Some north.
So certainly...
But 60 is kind of major.
60's a major.
60 is major. I guess one thing I would add, I know north on Milwaukee Avenue, north of 60, there's no electrical, certainly there. We are moving forward this year as part of the resurfacing of Milwaukee Avenue to have a landscape enhancement, so that is happening. But there was no electrical planned for that area.
Right, right.
And there's no electrical on Milwaukee Avenue going north in those medians either, but I think what the focus, as you're sharing, is more Route 60.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, that's where the opportunity is, and, you know, it'd be a nice enhancement. If it doesn't cost an inordinate amount of money, you know...
Something to look into. Well, it's just going to keep climbing, but find out what it's going to cost.
Take some of the summer, I mean, some of the winter wonderland, you know.
The monies that you can't use.
Wow, that'd be pretty distracting, though, too.
Yeah, maybe. It might slow it down.
Or if you could do it along the road, that'd be interesting, right away. That'd be real interesting.
One thing I would add...
It's a freebie.
Chief is dying over there.
Take the whip, chief. Bang, bang.
Yeah, a lot of bang-bangs.
Okay.
One thing just...
Body shops would love this.
We have a couple in town.
So we'll promote more business coming into Vernon Hills. One thing we did on Butterfield Road was we tried to add some light for the holiday. We ended up adding some holiday trees. We ended up adding some lights to those. We did run those off of solar, but unfortunately, with the overcast time of year, they ended up going into reserve flashing mode rather than being lit. We got a call from Lake County Department of Transportation that they were concerned about the color and traffic signals and some conflicts. I don't know if IDOT would feel the same way, but let me take that step of putting the estimate together and getting you those numbers, and you can make a decision how to proceed.
Yeah, okay.
So that being said, the preventive maintenance program, you know, this is our standard items. Crack sealing, 30,000. Pavement marking, 20,000. Pavement patching, 75,000. The pavement patching was increased last year. It was 60,000. There's a request for 15,000 more than last year. That's based on what we're seeing out on the streets and our needs. Seal coating, 30,000. Port Clinton Bridge, $10,000. Cherry Valley, West Moreland Storm Manhole. We have an old, that's the old section of town, and it is a brick manhole that is very deep, and we need to completely rehabilitate. And it's only one manhole, but that is the price. Port Clinton Road Patching, we did work with Buffalo Grove as part of their patching program. We own a very small section by Sugar Creek of Port Clinton Road. So Port Clinton Road goes in its old alignment east-west, and then it bends and connects to Buffalo Grove Road. There's a very small triangle that happens to be within our community. We had our residents that asked to have this road resurfaced. I reached out to Buffalo Grove. They had some additional funding. They ended up moving forward with paving that, and they just asked that we pay for our small little triangle. So that's what this money is. The work's been done. We're responsible to go and do the pavement markings after, but that's what this money is for.
A quick question on the road rehabilitation. What's our anticipated revenues from MFT towards this?
There you have our...
Our base number is about 598,000 plus another 20,000 from supplemental. And I think what this year, we're getting the last of the 101 jobs now.
Yes.
Money. So there's a 101 component that drops off after this upcoming year.
So we'll be looking at 494?
So we'll be looking at, well, next year, we'll be looking at 727, and then it'll drop off to 617.
For 15-16?
I'm sorry, for 15-16, we're looking at 727.
727, okay.
And maybe a follow-up thought, I think, while you asked that question. In terms of, we have a pavement management study that was in a preliminary stage. For it to move to final, we need to do traffic counts. So I've met with our staff. We're going to have traffic counters out, and they're going to be out for two months straight, looking at all of our collectors' arterials and having those traffic numbers. That needs to be fed into the software as well as some of the cross-section information that we have. And then within that, you put all that in the computer, and it will tell you how much they estimate we should spend each year based on a 20-year life, 25-year life, et cetera. So we'll work on that and get you answers sometime during the late summer.
Now, there was some talk about Congress enacting a new or revised gasoline tax. Does any of that filter down to this fund, or this is strictly the state's collection?
Strictly the state.
And there's no real interest by the state to increase there? Okay, thank you.
Then there's some bike path and sidewalk improvements. Our annual sidewalk program and curb program, that's 65,000. That hasn't changed. The three different sidewalk programs that I wanted to, we put aerials up, and the first one is on the screen, thanks to Mike Stordel. Green Vale to Deer Path, this was one that we originally had anticipated doing as part of our road program. We had to work with the church to obtain an easement. Trustee Williams helped with that, and we ended up obtaining the easement. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it with the road program, so we're proposing that we extend from the end of the existing sidewalk on Green Vale on the north side to Deer Path to make that connection. So that's what that $12,000 is for.
Is that this year?
We would propose to do it starting May 1.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then the next slide. This is West Moreland to the townhomes of Old Grove Farms. I know trustee Cook, this was one that you asked me to put on the list. Right now, what happens is for people within the townhomes, they, schoolkids would cross over to the other side, walk down the road to catch the bus. The request would be whether we would add a sidewalk on the near side. During the planning of Old Grove Farm Townhomes, it, you know, private streets because it really was substandard, not a lot of room for rear yards for the houses, 361 through 369. We would have to remove some trees, but this would be the alignment. So the next one would be, so this one, we've, the board's already discussed and given staff direction for $18,000. It's with Stevenson High School. They're extending from Stevenson High School easterly to the bridge, and then we would continue it from there. They did open bids, looking at their numbers. We have a sidewalk program that is an annual renewable sidewalk. We have a line item for new sidewalk. We can do this substantially cheaper than what their contractor proposed to do it. So we're looking to work with them, but we will conduct the work ourself. One thing that we're looking at is the bridge itself and the rubber rail, so the design engineer's helping us with that. So that's what the $18,000 would do for us. A larger item, 450,000 for a traffic signal at Lakeview and Greg's Parkway. I just want to alert everyone that, you know, we're going through a budget process. This isn't saying that we're not going to have communication with affected residents and have, you know, more discussions on it. We just need to make sure that we go through in terms of budgets, and there will be more discussion on this item.
As far as I'm concerned, you can pull this. I mean, there's no way I'm going to vote to build that because, A, I don't see a problem, and I've been driving that like crazy to try and get a feel for that intersection, and B, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense that we can get it done within this budget timeframe. So if you want to bring it back for 16, 17, maybe, but if we have to pull anything, that is number one with the bullet.
Do, are we having any problems with major accidents there, or any kind of accidents there?
We do have some accidents there, but they're very minor in nature.
Because like Jim said, I've been going up there a lot, rush hour, quote, or quote, rush hour, just driving through it and seeing how bad the backup is. There's a little backup, but I haven't seen anything major like I've heard people talking about.
I mean, do the traffic counts justify it?
Yes. We did the warrant study at this...
In the morning rush, and in the evening?
It meant all of the counts except for the one for accident history. Really, this, you know, this is a budget discussion in terms of whether you want it on or not. Obviously, that's the board's decision. We also have the Menards project that's moving forward. We need to work through having a traffic signal installed there. There is an approach that we could take, that we install the traffic signal there. We go back and recount the intersections, see what changes it affects, and come back and have another discussion with the board.
Yeah, well, the traffic signal at Menards is, how much are they contributing to that? Everything?
My understanding, 50% is the properties to the north and 50% to the south. There is one issue that we're working through as far as the permit for that. The ultimate, remember the three-party agreement, Zale, the county, and the village. They do call for Greg's Parkway eastbound dual rights to go onto Milwaukee Avenue. So that's one of the large items that LDOT, IDOT, and our consultant is looking at. If we don't have dual rights, there's a potential that it could back up all the way through the proposed Menards traffic signal. So we're having conversations with Menards' traffic engineer, KLOA, and we need to resolve that. I'm not looking to approve a Greg's Parkway set of plans or approve of the signal, or we're not going to issue building permits and certificates of occupancies without having answers to that. So, but I just wanted to alert the board that's one thing that's happening.
So it would be a six-lane kind of cross-section there?
So we will have...
Would it be two-through lanes?
Because there's taper lanes, it's, there's a lot of, it depends where along that segment you're talking about.
I'm talking at the light.
At 60, it's at Milwaukee.
Yeah. If I'm eastbound on Greg's Parkway?
Eastbound at Greg's Parkway, you will have two dual lefts. You have a single through, and you will have dual rights.
Okay.
And you will have two receiving lanes going westbound.
Coming in, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, that would be, well, you know, if we got to do two right-hand turns, we should, because, yeah, why find out? It's like a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah. And the traffic counts are calling for a long queuing time, and we want people to be able to make it up to the signal and continue through without that, without that extra lane. They're just going to stack up larger. But those are the discussions we're having, and we've asked them to respond to our review comments.
But people making a right-hand turn onto southbound Milwaukee will not be impeded by a red light camera.
As far as we're concerned, they won't be.
So that'll move those people through there a lot quicker, if it was across the street in Libertyville.
Well, yeah, the problem there, though, is that people are intimidated by the sign that they can see out of the corner of their eye that says, you know, photo-informed.
We'll put up a more prominent sign saying that the camera's across the street.
That's Libertyville's sign, not ours.
And there is no sign, signal on our side of the street.
We don't have a red light camera.
We'll make...
Get one flash it.
Is that anything in the district?
We'll make sure the sign that we installed remains out there, you know, describing that it's not a Vernon Hills.
Yeah, right, you know.
I love it.
So is the general consensus of the board to push this out and have Menards install their signal and then come back and discuss it again with the board? Okay, thank you for that direction.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what that's going to happen with that one.
So if we can move on to the V-HAC, there's some things planned for the V-HAC. There's a storage container for soccer, $4,000. We did pay for the other store, the other storage containers for the other users. Soccer group has asked for it, so that's why that's included. Asphalt path repairs, $8,000. This one, synthetic field turf engineering for Field Nine. Really, I just added that to see what the board's interest is in terms of, do we want to move forward with Astroturf within those fields? One field will probably cost us in the $870,000 range for one field. $20,000, I might be able to get some free advice from them and try to put together something, a better estimate, some drawings that might not have to spend the 20 grand.
Who's looking for these?
I'm sorry?
Who, 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 I feel like an owl here, who, pray tell, wants synthetic fields out there? I mean...
It's, we have recently, in this spring, we are taking a field out for the first time because of all the wear and tear and the success of the fields. Who's asking for it? I think it's more that we, similar to Rustoleum Field, we would end up reducing the cost for mowing, and we'd, there'd be more availability for people to use it in the springtime and late in the year where that's not available. Now, whether or not there's a large need, I'm not sure that that demand is there right now. There has to be an understanding that we are going to have to take a field out each year and maintain them. This is the first year that we, as I said, we've had to do that. So with that understanding, maybe we don't need it.
Is that the arresting factor?
It is that.
I'd be a little concerned doing anything this year because of the fact of the cancer studies that are ongoing right now with the materials that they're using as the infill. Now, I know that they've, they're looking at other materials. They're looking at the gym shoe materials as opposed to the truck tires, but that, I think, changes the price from 800,000 to a million or whatever. So I don't want to be on the leading edge of this right now just because I think there'd be a fair amount of pushback from the residents slash parents. And I think, let's see what a cycle or two or a couple of fields of the replacement does to us, how it turns out after we're done.
You're talking the stuff you see in slow motion?
Yeah, the granular, right, the granular material that they use to kind of stabilize the individual, what do you, leaves of brass, whatever, so.
Really a discussion point. I don't think there's a defined need. If the board would prefer that I not have this on there, we can save the $20,000.
I think I'd defer to...
I'd like to call it this year. I agree, Jim.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the more significant seven figures about a year from now, you know.
So we will postpone and push that out?
But let's revisit it, 16, 17, you know, when there might be a little more information of it.
When they have more information, we start discussing it, right?
Would that be the type of field that would be attractive to, like, frisbee, you know, ninjas?
I could find a few people who'd be willing to run across that and dive and enjoy theirself.
The diving, I think, is, that's the part. Goal tenders have a higher preponderance of cancer than the forwards, or midfielders, or strikers, or whatever.
When I play those ninja sports, I'm not so much a diver, I'm more of a faller, but...
With age.
So the shelter design, this $20,000 professional services, what we're discussing is, we all know the concession building and the bathroom building. We think that there's more shelter when the Thor Guard system goes out. We need people to get off of the fields and go somewhere. Right now, we have some shelter, but not to the degree that we need, and people have to go to their cars, have to go to the buses. Sometimes the buses are parked really far away.
Right.
What the concept would be is, there is the patio area between the concession building and the bathroom building. Yeah, there's not a...
Where?
There's no picture. So I guess in terms of those, we would end up having some sort of connection node between the existing concession building and the bathrooms. Those are two rectangles. So what would be a design to have some sort of overhead shelter in that area?
Over the path.
So you're going to buy your hot dog at the concession area, so that area would now be covered. You could walk from there to the bathroom, you would be covered. There's picnic tables there. Those would all be covered.
Yeah, okay.
So I have asked a local architect to take a look at it. He's going to give us some free advice as far as what it may look like, so I can share that with the board before we go to professional...
What about where the football fields are and the softball fields? There's nothing there.
There is nothing there.
Okay. Well...
What the concept was is to, you know, put it in a place where there's the most density of people, and that's, you know, by the concession area, so...
And by the pinwheel.
Yeah, well, there's one at the pinwheel, but at the, where the bathrooms and the concession areas.
Yeah, I understand.
That one, so...
So everybody else just better run like hell.
Just run.
Right, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. Ultimately, I think we need more shelter areas out there than just these two, but, you know, this is the first step, I guess.
Okay.
The next is sand slit drainage for Fields Five, Six, and Twelve. Uh, the, the next is, uh, sand slit drainage for fields five, six, and twelve. Um, I wouldn't call it fracking, but it's, uh, basically causing a crevice within the fields and then you fill that with sand. And so on this, uh, it keeps the fields in play better where you don't have to have very, uh, ideal drainage. It will fill into the sand slits that you've cut and it will drain out towards a, a lower area and off the fields. It just allows the fields to be, uh, uh, playable quicker.
Cheap French grain.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, and then, um, field number two, backstop net replacement, ten thousand dollars. Uh, we are working through one, uh, let's see, we have done two of them. This would be the third and then the following year we would do the fourth. And then all of the nets within the pinwheel would be, uh, completed.
Are there better, more durable materials with a longer life expectancy available these days or?
Um, the, the netting generally has been, uh, serving us well. A lot of it is the cabling systems and, uh, that's what we're struggling with. Uh, just a high wind area and a lot of torsion on them, so. Uh, let's see, thirty thou- the next item, the Park District Maintenance Building. Uh, we currently have a two-year lease. Um, should we decide to e- expand that to a different term beyond two years, um, this is thirty thousand dollars that would go towards, uh, some maintenance. We, we've, you know, if we ultimately become the owners or if we have a ninety-nine year lease or something beyond two years, if, if we're just a tenant, we're not spending this money. If it is something that the board desires and works through with the Park District, this is thirty thousand dollars that would help us, uh, work on the roof. Um, that's the main thing we would need to spend the money on. There is some masonry work that we have to do on the inside because there's, uh, a crack in the wall that water is getting on the inside. The inside patch is relatively inexpensive, fifteen hundred dollars or so. Um, you do some, uh, tuck pointing of the, the masonry building, but, um, it's in pretty good shape all in all, but this would just be a, a holding account for thirty thousand dollars to make those type of repairs.
And we wouldn't make this until after this two-year lease is expired or we've gotten an extension already on a ninety-nine year or something?
True. We would not spend any of this thirty thousand dollars unless there's an agreement that we have a long-term lease, ninety-nine years or so, or we become owners. Under the two-year lease agreement, we're not spending this money. We would have to come back to the board if we'd wanted to spend money in that building as a tenant.
Just don't come back next, oh, maybe late in the year and say you're gonna use this money for something else like another department does. Movie by law, I'm watching, just so you know, I'm watching.
Street lighting, uh, street lighting controller upgrades, fourteen thousand dollars. Um, we have a, a lot of streetlight controllers. Uh, this would help us, uh, go through some of those cabinets and keep them current. Fifteen thousand for streetlight LED fixtures. We, we have, uh, worked with the Oaks Development to try a style of LED lights, uh, and they are really our prototype and test case. So, um, we have went through, uh, one section of corporate woods, the Forest Edge Woodlands area, and we've added some LED lights there. We've also worked as part of the Victory Center project that the board approved and added, uh, a LED light out there too. So, the future is moving towards LED and getting away from high pressure sodium. So, this fifteen thousand dollars would allow us to put some, uh, new heads on those poles.
And they're not an issue in storms, snowstorms?
Um, I think-
Like traffic lights would be, 'cause they generate no heat.
I absolutely understand. Um, so with the traffic lights, they have a, uh, a nose, uh, and the, the snow collects within that cone. With these, the, the light is pointing down, so therefore we don't have as much of an issue with them sticking to it, but that is the issue that, uh, yeah, they do not conduct heat. The good side is they do not attract bugs, uh, with the, the heat part of it. One of the big issues that we have with trying to maintain lights is, you know, they like to set up a nest in that nice warm area.
Sure, sure. So with streetlights, it makes sense, but of course with traffic lights, it would be different.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, open space and stormwater improvements, uh, you know, the, uh, you know, local drainage, eighteen thousand. What that is, is, uh, really going up and down the, it's open space. It's going up and down the CV ditch, uh, making sure that that's properly maintained, um, cleaning out log jams, et cetera, et cetera. So this is something that we have done, uh, year after year and, uh, no change in the dollar amount. Uh, Lake Charles, uh, lake management, uh, eight thousand dollars. We, we're, we've recently had a study by the, um, Health Department as far as what the needs, uh, are out at Lake Charles. It's really sediment, a lot of sediment load. This eight thousand dollars helps us put together a grant to try to apply to do some, some work out there. Um, we'll, we'll share with the board the specifics as far as what we're looking to do. We have hired a consultant that has analyzed everything. They put together a grant application and, um, in terms of doing that, a lot of it is trying to control the sediment as, as the water goes down the CV ditch, it creates a delta at the entrance point, uh, into the lake and, uh, we also have a sediment load towards the, towards the dam itself. So, uh, the grant would help us, uh, address those needs. Uh, Harvey Lake, the, the money there, that's going towards our, we've already done it for two years. This would be a third year. We're trying to get some of the invasives under control. Our first two years has been very successful. It's, uh, Eurasian water mill foil that, uh, we're, uh, we're dealing with. Uh, great improvements that we've done and I know the chief's really proud of that. The, uh, the next item is the Deer Path Metal Culvert, uh, south of Abilene, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, let's see, so I do, I do have a-
Dave, please back up.
Yes, sir.
This porous pavement lot option, you wanna explain that?
What?
The, I'm sorry?
Is that the pavement that actually drains?
So yes, there, there are some, uh, forest preserve, uh, parking lots that do have this in other areas. Uh, they've showed demonstrations for porous pavement where you can run a water hose. And if I'm spraying it from here, by the time it gets to Larry, um, you do not see the water runoff anymore. It soaks through the porous pavement, goes into the under, underlying stone and then it disperses in the soils. Um, the, one of the things that you do have to do is vacuum that, uh, twice a year. So there is a higher degree of, uh, maintenance on it, but it is more, uh, more green, so. You, you have to vacuum the surface of, of the asphalt to keep it, to keep the voids open to allow the water to drain through.
Is it, is it glass? Is there a certain amount of glass in there? Is the pavement that's, has a lot of ground up glass in it?
Um, there's, there's por- there's porous pavements that have different types of material. One of them is a glass product. Um, there's porous pavements that have, uh, that are out of, uh, you know, Portland cement. There's asphalt that's used. There's different-
Okay, so what you're referencing here is some kind of asphalt?
Uh, let's see, for the five-year plan, um-
Yeah.
Yes, that, that would, that would be a standard asphalt porous pavement. Um, and where that would be used would be, uh, so this is, just so people are listening, um, this is not proposed for, for the next budget year.
No, I understand.
It's a future one, but it would be at Harvey Lake. And because Harvey Lake is such a, um, a nice amenity and we wanna be very environmentally sensitive to it, porous pavement would be a very good application because you wouldn't have direct runoff of, of asphalt, uh, hydrocarbons, et cetera, that are getting into the lake. It would go through the pavement and then it would filter through the sand and soils before it got into the lake. So I think that's a really good application for the product.
So they would be in, on the streets over there?
Uh, the porous pavement would be in a future parking lot surrounding Har- Harvey Lake.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right, so.
Again, uh, whatever we do, I want it to connect directly to Lakeview, not in the neighborhood, 'cause I don't wanna increase traffic in the neighborhood and/or make it a private lake for the neighborhood. It's a public amenity, so.
Yeah, I mean, as far as walking and biking and such, yeah.
Yeah, make it connect it to Lake.
No, it's nice back there. It's real nice.
Oh, for Harvey, oh, it's beautiful back there.
And I, I remember that direction.
It's okay.
Used to be gorgeous.
All right.
Uh, so if I may, uh, up on the, uh, screen is a, uh, Storm Sewer Atlas. Uh, in red, you see a circle that's the outfall for, from, uh, Abilene. It drains across Deer Path and then it outfalls into Evergreen Lake. Um, the outfall, uh, it's a corrugated metal pipe, a very large one, uh, every bit of, uh, four feet in diameter. And we have had some issues with it collapsing. So it's ovaling, it, something needs to be done. So this money would pay for, we may do a design build, um, bring a couple of different contractors out there, have them, uh, tell us h- how they propose to do the work, give us a price and get this fixed. We also know with the Park District, there's some trees in the area, so I have talked to Jeff about this project and we need to work along the shoreline and maybe we can enhance it. Um, the culvert is pulled back a little bit where it outfalls and so then there's, um, we might be able to, uh, gain a little bit of land and have a little bit of, uh, better aesthetics along that area. So that's what the hundred thousand dollars would, uh, do for us.
Well, should, should we do, uh, Crabtree too?
Same time.
Since we're not doing the synthetic turf next year?
Yeah.
Let's see, um- I mean, is that need to be done sooner than later?
I, yeah, I, I think that's a, a good idea. Um, let, let's keep the hundred thousand dollars and see what that gets us. I may come back to the board and ask for a little bit more money if we do Crabtree at the same time. I think that's a good idea because it is right in that same area.
Jesus, they're on top of each other.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't have the immediate need that the other does, but I do agree it's right in that area. It does have some similar age issues, so, um, yeah, I, I concur and I can make that change.
This is something that would benefit, obviously, the homeowners, right, that live in those general areas?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Um, so I will, I, I note that change and we'll make sure that, uh, is, gets done.
Do you wanna add the twenty thousand that we took from the, uh, from the study?
We might have to add more than that, right? I mean-
I, I, I was trying to see if we could get by with just a hundred and twenty thousand.
To do both of them? All right, Larry, get the, you know, get the-
A hundred and twenty thousand it is.
Get that wizard wand going there.
Yeah, I was gonna move that twenty over from that other page over here. From page one, we'll move that twenty over.
Hundred and twenty, yes.
Synthetic turf money we're putting over there.
Uh, not synthetic turf, but, uh, carpet for the boardroom. So, um, we, we have, uh, budgeted some money. Uh, I did not get an estimate. I, I don't know the specific price for this, uh, type of carpeting. I know it is an upgrade from a, a standard, uh, carpeting, uh, carpet, but-
Right here?
Yes.
It needs it bad.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Yes, right here.
Oh, oh, really?
Oh, it's really bad around this side.
Is it?
Yeah.
One of the issues we have is where those electric, um, those little entry boxes are, that those are a s- a plastic material and when you put some weight on them, they tend to give. So we need to also redo that as part of the, the, the numbers. Make it, uh, more durable boxes than what was installed originally.
Four thirty.
That's right. How old is this carpet then?
When was the building built?
Two thousand and two.
Fourteen years?
Two thousand and two?
Fourteen years.
I think it was, we moved in-
Holy moly.
In two thousand and two, didn't we?
Yeah, it's still ugly.
Something like that.
Okay.
Fourteen years.
Uh, let's see.
Nineteen twelve.
Yeah, Jesus, yeah, nineteen, nineteen oh two. It was nineteen, nineteen fifteen.
Nineteen twelve, right.
And at the last, uh, village board meeting, uh, the Kemper, uh, presented their budget and so these were the, some of the items that, these were items discussed at that meeting.
Yeah.
We're talking about the cart barn, adding a new roof, twelve thousand dollars. The siding and painting of the cart barn, five thousand dollars. Fencing repairs, those are miscellaneous, uh, damaged fence sections along Hawthorne Club, so it would be not full replacements, but re- making repairs with that money.
Didn't, didn't we paint the barn at the same time we painted the building last year?
Um, the, the-
I, I don't know either.
No. We, we did that a few, we did the ins- when we bought the, uh, or we leased or bought the, uh, carts, we did some painting at that same time. We painted the inside also.
Last year we painted the outside of the building, right? It was last year, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, they made up the clubhouse itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was last year or the year before.
But not the barn.
But not the barn.
Worst case, it was the year before and we didn't do the barn at the same time?
I don't think so.
Um, we, we, we put lipstick on a pig rather than doing the full repairs.
Then fixing it, right.
This has been something that's been on a list, um, like eight years ago to replace, um, the siding, et cetera. We just painted it.
Oh, all right, so you're gonna put up new T one eleven and paint it?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, spec- especially on the one side, so, uh-
Bye.
The one that gets hit by golf balls.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That whole building is, what would it cost to replace that building and just do it right?
I don't know.
No?
It's a cart barn.
Yeah.
Well, I know that.
It's still, it's gonna fall down.
Uh, it, it sounds from, uh, Takano B. It, it meets their, their needs. Uh, we did do some, uh, very good improvements on the inside. We added electric and plug in the carts. Um, so if we can take care of the outside and the roof, I think it serves us well. And then there's the awning. So, um, the, the awning, uh, has served its, uh, useful life. It's starting to leak in at least one specific area.
It leaks all over. Replace it.
Okay, so, uh, eighty-four hundred dollars for that.
Well, let me ask the question. What would it cost to do a roof detail there and just get it over with?
Otherwise extend the awning all the way across the back.
Well, you know what I, you know what I mean? Just do a roof detail.
Well, that too.
I mean, that would-
Replace the current awning.
Yeah, yeah. And then just, you just gotta shingle it every twenty years, you know?
What is the, the awning cost, what, eighty-four?
I'd, I'd really need to know as far as what the square footage of, of it is and kinda chase that down. Um, I, that was a question that was asked. I talked to Mike Atkinson a little bit and I, I wasn't able to give him the level of detail that we could put together a good estimate. Is it gonna be fully enclosed like it is an addition? Would it go across the whole patio area or just the existing part from the doorway going towards us? Or would it be the whole patio?
Well, it'd be kinda nice to go the whole length, not go around the corner, but the whole length so the people can sit.
On the, the east side of the building.
Well, it's a, yeah, whatever, yeah, east side, yeah, southeast side.
Well, I'd, I'd prefer seeing a whole comprehensive plan and say, hey, you know, if we increased the overall square footage of the banquet space inside by adding a part of the exterior as-
Oh, okay.
-conditioned space, we could now generate this kind of revenue and have these kinds of parties as opposed to, it's just fix this leaky.
Right, right, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the awning's the awning, but, uh, or, or do you do-
You know, that's something we should look at. Not for this year, but I mean, go ahead and do the awning now.
Right.
But put that into a long-range plan possibly for kicking out that wall, doing away with the balcony part out there and extending that side.
I mean, that's what White Deer Run has done, you know.
Right. Cause it is a ni- it's the only facility we got to make.
Well, you can still have something outside.
It doesn't cost them anything.
And, and or you could create multiple spaces that could accommodate-
I know.
Maybe two events at one time, given that they're small, et cetera. So I, but right now, they need a new awning, 'cause they're, they're using it.
Oh, yeah, no, no question.
So.
Okay.
So I, I understand the direction. We'll move forward with the awning for this year. We'll look into, uh, some sketches. We'll look into, uh, some sketches and estimates as far as some, uh, building-type renovation.
We don't want to mess up the aesthetics of that building either. It's a beautiful little building, I don't want to screw it up.
Gotcha.
Like a dark...
Halfway doing it.
Dark navy...
We don't want to add an air room.
Like a dark navy blue and gold would...
Well, and maybe we could talk a little bit with Kemper about their thoughts.
That'll make sense, yeah, if he can look gold.
Talk with Kemper a little bit about their thoughts, if, if we were to say, if we were to add X number of square feet, what do they think in terms of additional revenues that might be generated? Maybe they have a rule of thumb that we could work off of without...
And then we could talk to Mr. Malpey.
Our ropes down there anyway, I don't know if it's gonna ever happen.
Talk to White Deer Run folks, too, get their feedback on... Whatever.
Very good, and then the Arbor Theater, uh, as I, uh, I talked to the board a little bit before the meeting, there's control cabinets for the irrigation system, thirty thousand dollars. This year, uh, current budget year, we've, uh, replaced one of the three. Next year would be the second, and then we have one more following year to, and then we would be through all three irrigation cabinets. Um, they're, they're roughly twenty years old, parts are no longer available, and we need to keep that irrigation system working because we got a big investment. And then the last item is the, um, HVAC for the dispatch, uh, area. The, you know, twenty thousand dollars, um, really looking to just try to, uh, address some of the humidity issues. We've put more and more bodies there, there's some more, uh, electronics. So, what this would do is reduce a lot of the static electricity that's in there, et cetera. So, um, I don't know if this is a solution for it, this is the, uh, the money, uh, to make a remedy to that.
If it's not gonna fix it, why are we only doing this?
I, I'm sorry, I might have misspelled.
We, we're not gonna, we don't know if this will remedy the problem, or we're hoping it will remedy the problem.
So, the, the first step is, I ha- um, I'm, I have a mechanical engineer, uh, looking at what the needs are for that room. We know we have a, a newer rooftop unit that, uh, serves that area.
Right.
But there's a humidity, dehumidity, uh, issue that the rooftop unit doesn't address. So, we, we don't want to necessarily guess on what the issue and how the repair needs to be.
Humidifier, dehumidifier to fix it?
Well, this, our building has a humidifier, dehumidifier.
Oh, I don't even want to talk about this building, the heating, everything here is so screwed up, you'll never get it fixed. Rip it out and start it all over is my opinion, but...
So, so we would hire a, a professional mechanical engineer to tell us what the needs are. This would just be budget numbers if we need to do something. So, I didn't want to come back to the board after the fact and ask for...
This is almost only gonna pay for your system or your guy, okay, I got it, I got it, so...
Thank you, that, um, so that's the, uh, annual program. I'm, I'm not certain, in the past, uh, we haven't specifically went through all four sheets. I don't know if there's certain items that the, the board would like to potentially move forward, or if we're comfortable with the, uh, the annual program as presented.
Uh, with the annual, I...
You know...
Well, the only one that I suggested moving forward was the, uh, Crabtree, uh, culvert, right?
Yeah, he added that.
Yes, uh, that is noted.
It's okay with the board, I mean...
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
That is noted, and, uh, we will make that change.
Well, I'll defer to the board then, if there's anything else they think should be moved forward from the out-eaters, I guess, you know?
Um, I'm not that I'm aware of, at this moment.
The, um, I can never remember the two streets, um, that are concrete.
Yeah, Midway and Linden.
Midway and Linden.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize to the residents that live on those streets.
They've got to understand, I do the same thing.
What do we, where do we want to go with that, and when? Midway and Linden. I mean, we're gonna need to prep these folks, and we're gonna need to come up with a plan that's probably gonna be costly, but that allows us to go in there and maybe in three weeks' time, rip it up and replace it and minimize, and that's gonna cost a lot of money and whatever.
Yes, so for, for Midway and Linden, it's, it's been something we've done, concrete patching over the years. We've tried to, uh, keep it, uh, where we didn't have to inconvenience, uh, the residents of the area. I've been trying to monitor as far as how many calls we get and complaints that this road is just unacceptable. I can tell you from a rideability standpoint, we've done so much patching in there that residents, uh, you know, they probably do not like the, uh, the rideability. Uh, they also lived through the Deer Path reconstruction, and that's exactly what you're talking about. So, um, it is in a future year, and as far as when we would move forward, I think I'm really just monitoring feedback from the residents of Midway and Linden, and whether we should move it sooner or not.
Where have you got it right now?
I, I believe it's, uh, four years out, let me, so that would be on the front sheet, and we're looking at FY nineteen twenty.
No, yes. So, it is.
That one due to the, uh, the level of work as, as you, uh, anticipate. Uh, we would hire a design engineer to help us with that and put plans together.
What kind of, you know, depth of asphalt would you have to put in there taking out the concrete? What is the thickness of the concrete?
Um, I, I, I believe the concrete is an eight-inch, uh, concrete, uh, surface, but, you know, it's... Typically, they're six to eight inches, but I, I believe this one is eight inch. We know that, uh, Libertyville, a lot of their roads were built around that, that, uh, with the same type of design, and they're dealing with that right now also.
But i- is it, is, is there a higher water table there?
I don't know anything about a higher water table there, I've, I've heard that, but I don't...
Many moons ago, you know, you might want to touch base with the Andersons, because I think they, they were the engineers at the time when that was put in.
Pam Newton just lived over there, you could probably ask her a bit, she knows.
Well, yeah, but I, I would rather ask the Andersons, they might be, they might give us a more in-depth answer than Pam, you know?
I don't know.
But, uh, I thought that was part of the issue there.
Okay.
You know, because I remember Stone Fence Farms, they had some ridiculous, uh, amount of, like, topsoil, a- and, and, and I think they had a...
Yeah, on the other side, right?
They had a higher ground, a higher groundwater for, just, just, again, it's just, you know, tapping the archives here.
Yeah, wh- what you're sharing makes sense, uh, a, a lot of times with poor soils, whether it's a high-water table that, uh, is, is the equivalent to poor, creates poor soils. A lot of times, instead of undercuts and putting in three inches of large, uh, rock, it was more economical, and certainly with the developer, to just go ahead and put in concrete. Concrete isn't flexible, it's rigid, and it can bridge some of those imperfections, so that, that point is well taken.
It wasn't originally concrete.
Might have been Pozzolatic.
Right, but it was not concrete.
And then they went to the concrete?
Then, when they replaced it, we put concrete.
But it was done a long time ago, the concrete, really was.
It was done when Pam Newton lived there.
I understand that part, but that's...
So, I was already, it was a long time ago, it was right.
That's a long time ago now.
Yeah, I told you, that's the last I worked about it.
Everything's a long time ago now.
But we have done it in the last twenty years.
Yeah, so what you're sharing, it, it used to be asphalt, and then it went to concrete for whatever reason, but, um...
She didn't move there right away.
That's before I was born.
Well, anyway, it, it, it goes back a few moons, and, and I think you got Linden and Midway that are similar to Deer Path as far as being, you know, like any other number of streets, the Pozzolatic, and it got, maybe it got the upgrade with the concrete, you know? But I just remember, a- again, Andersons talking about, they, they just had to throw a gang of gravel in there, because it was just, they just kept, they just kept adding gravel, you know?
Well, I, I know, uh, I know Pam, I know the Andersons, I'll, uh, I'll reach out to them and learn more.
I'm sure the Andersons can fill you in pretty good, you know?
Sounds good.
All right. Anything else?
Not, not from staff.
Is there anything else tonight on this agenda then? There's enough.
No, sir, I mean, if you're, if you're okay with what you've heard tonight and with the adjustments that you've asked, what we'll do is if you're concurring with this, we will move forward, include this as a part of the budget. Dave will get you some new, some additional numbers on electrifying the, uh, medians out in Route sixty and in a, I think probably a light decorating number for the, the tr- the holiday tree, or holiday lighting of those trees out there, um, so that we can have an understanding of that number. And then that'll be included as a part of the budget when we start talking on, uh, March third, I believe.
Trustee Williams?
Yeah, it's really not on the budget so much as a question on paving the Lakeview Parkway and Hawthorne there. When was that, was that this summer or next summer?
We, we have, it was originally scheduled for next year. We've had a, a recent mayor's and manager meeting, um, just, uh, from hearing from different, uh, trustees on whether we should or shouldn't move forward with that project. I did ask that they push that, uh, consideration out. What we'd like to do is bring in our consultant who, uh, has been helping us with those projects. Really, decision points is, the roadway within, it's not on this year's road rehab project for this coming summer. For the following year, my recommendation is that we need to make a decision what we're doing with Lakeview and Fairway. The conditions of the pavement is warranting that we need to do something, so we make the decision. Are we going to add capacity and widen it, or are we gonna go through resurfacing? If we're, if we're not gonna add the capacity, I've already asked our consultant to look at each intersection, and if we're not doing the largest of projects, where do we get our most bang for the buck? Instead of widening all of the roadways, look at each intersection and see, with the added turn lane, does that add some capacity and, uh, enhance that intersection? So, um, we wouldn't have to spend, you know, ten million dollars, but we might be able to get some benefit at each of those intersections. So, we will bring civil tech engineering to a, a future meeting, have them present it. You can ask them more specific questions, but they've already given me an outline of, uh, just bullet points of where enhancements would happen at each of those. I need to get them to, uh, help me with specific dollar amounts, because that helps drive our decisions also.
I'd just like to see them do an analysis, okay, this is the baseline, the way it is today. If we took one of the two left turn lanes, what exactly would be the result of that? Made that the through lane, and then made the right-hand lane a right turn lane. Uh, because I think a lot of the backup, especially the backup that clogs up past the, the shopping center, is based on the fact that not enough folks can make right turns, because that is also the through lane. And I never see enough traffic needing the two left turn lanes to go west on, uh, or Route sixty there. So, I'd just like them to run the numbers from their perspective, what they're seeing from whatever level of counts that they have. And that would be a simple, you know, uh, because the lights are lined up close enough. You know, it would just require better pavement marking, and I, I think that would make a whole lot of sense there to get more traffic through, but, again, that's just me.
No, uh, understood, uh, right next to where Buc-E's is, that was one of the things we did on the north leg. We looked at, uh, an incremental change just to some striping and to a signal head, and, uh, we improved that intersection. So, uh, what you're sharing, that's the approach that we're looking at, uh, having them analyze, and they'll come back and talk to us.
Yeah, I'd, I'd really like to see that number as to what that would do to the stacking depth and the, the overall timing through that intersection.
Okay.
But what about, is Phillips part of the 1.3 million rehab? Phillips from Lakeview to Deer Path, that whole stretch there?
We, we...
Is that included this year?
Uh, Philip Road is included, uh, in the road program, yes.
For, for this year?
For this, starting, uh, starting May one.
Okay, good. Does that sound nasty?
It absolutely is, it absolutely is. We, what we were planning as far as Philip was figuring out when Lakeview and Fairway capacity was wide. We were gonna add it to that project, uh, because of, uh, some uncertainty, we decided it does need it, you're pointing out the potholes, et cetera, yeah, so it is included for this year.
And everyone's really heavily traveled, you know?
Hawthorne Commons, uh, entry or exit, or whatever you want to call it, from out onto Hawthorne Parkway, and, uh, where Target comes off of Lakeview. Those two areas are really bad. But Hawthorne Commons, the other day, I was coming out of there, and I was sitting at the light, so I was the first car up, I wasn't speeding out of the parking lot, and the hole was just huge.
Yes.
I, I was sitting there looking at it going, oh my gosh, you know, it's really bad there. So, I don't know if that's their property or on our property, I couldn't really, I didn't think about it until I pulled away of where it was lined.
They, uh, hot, first Hawthorne Commons, uh, they had a three-year phasing program to make improvements on their property, and we found out that they went up to but not including the loop detectors, because once you start touching the loop detectors, it gets expensive, so they stopped short. Um, our staff, uh, I just had a conversation last week with our staff on that, so we want to talk to the shopping center about, uh, about when are they gonna complete that area?
Sure.
So...
Okay, thanks.
What we look at, uh, for those is that it's, it's really a, you know, whether it's an apron or it's a driveway, that's a connection to our roadway in that they maintain those.
Right, that's what, I thought it was theirs, but as I said, I wasn't real sure if it was just outside of ours or...
Understood, understood.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn committee at all?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call, please.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart, trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schwartz, trustee Williams. Trustee Hebda.
Aye.
Mayor Byrne.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, and good night.